Good evening. I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls, City Council meeting for Tuesday, October the 15th to order.
Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Holst?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Madsen?
Here.
McCusker?
Yes.
Schoblum?
Here.
And Mayor Robinson?
Here. All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council meeting. At this time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Some move.
I'll second.
A motion by Merle, a second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Carries. Moves us to item five on the agenda of this evening's public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone wishing to address the council under a public input? This might be the time, if you're looking at anything on the consent agenda, to talk about it also. Right there, and just put your name and everything on their force card.
Hello. We're here tonight about the peace poll.
Okay.
That's on the agenda. We got called last week by the Reverend of the Saint, that's the answer, Congregational Church, asking how we felt about it. And I told her that we didn't think it was a good idea, and that we'd also have to, if it was something that was going to be brought up, would have to be brought up to the whole membership of the VFW and/or Legion and the Memorial Committee. Well, the letter came out in the Beacon about it being up for review, and then on the recommendation for the City Council tonight, it says it's up for approval. Okay? Well, I think it's kind of a conflict of interest putting a religious peace poll up next to the Veterans Memorial. And we're here tonight to support that. We don't see it go up there.
Yeah, we've had, a lot of us have had some, I've had some phone calls on it, people not wanting to do that. And I think as we move forward here in a few minutes, you'll see that some action is going to be taken on that tonight, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll be bringing it down off the consent agenda to regular business, so.
Okay. I mean, if they want to put it up across the road or something, or downtown, you know. But I think that's a little different.
Well, we'll talk about that tonight. Thanks. Anyone else wishing to?
Good evening. My name is Bob Fryermuth. I'm the, I am on the committee for the Memorial Committee, and the majority of the committee is not approved with this proposal. I'm also the commander of the American Legion post Cannon Falls. The majority of my membership are not in favor of this proposal. As a veteran, I am not in favor of this proposal. I contend there is one peace poll there already, which has the American flag on it, which stands for peace. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Anyone else?
Mayor.
Is anyone else that wishes to address the council on this issue? Or on any issue? If not, we'll move on to item six, the consent agenda. Items on this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For those folks at home, I will read the consent agenda. Item A is adjusting correct claims for accounting period ending October the 11th, 2013. Item B is the meeting minutes for the October 1st, 2013 City Council meeting. Item C is a second reading and adoption of ordinance 332 and summary of publication permitting annexation by ordinance. Item D, Resolution 2039, approving conditional use permit and variance for Casey's. Item E, Resolution 2040, accepting a donation from the Cannon Falls Fire Department Relief Association to the ambulance department. Item F, purchase of playground structures. Item G, Resolution 2041, approving MINDOC cooperative snow removal agreement. Item H, peace poll placement. And item I, application for payment number five for the East Side Improvement Project. Are there any items anybody wishes to bring down?
Yes, I'd like to bring down item H.
Okay, item H will become item 7A, which will go, be council business now. Reports will be item eight. And adjournment will be item nine. Any others?
F and I.
F and I. Okay, F will become B. And I will become C. Are there any orders? Others? Not the Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item F, the purchase of playground structures, item H, the peace poll placement, and item I, application for payment number five for the East Side project.
Some move.
I'll second.
A motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carries. Okay, we'll go on to item 7A, which is the peace poll placement.
I'll let you handle it.
Okay, yeah. So I think basically there was some miscommunication between the church group and whoever they talked to that they thought was representing the VFW. I talked to Pastor Martin last, well, it would have been last, or last week she called and said she talked with somebody from the VFW group. They said they didn't have an issue with it. Here's where we talked about putting it. So that's where we went with it. Since the agenda came out, we found that there's probably some miscommunication there and that the person they talked to wasn't expressing the interests of the whole group as far as the VFW and the Memorial Committee. So I talked to Pastor today. She said they're not interested in causing any issues. So she's working with Tom to find a different park to put it in. They're going to get together this week and take a look at a few different parks around town and find a different spot for it. So once they find a new location, they'll bring that back, we'll bring that back to the council for discussion. So I would say for now, if we can table it, and then once Tom and the pastor find a new location for it, we'll bring it back to the council for approval. But they're not interested in having it by the memorial if it's going to cause any concerns. So they're more than happy to find a different location. So that's what we're going to look for.
All right. Well, then I'd make a motion to table.
A motion by Bill to table it, or is there any other?
Second.
And a second by Merle. Any other discussion?
The only thing I got is that since we got all these service people here tonight, I'd like to thank them for their service. Thank you.
There's no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion's tabled. And that brings us to item 7B, which is going to be the purchase of playground structures.
Yeah, Aaron. I look at the numbers on this. This 50,000 is coming out of the park fund, I take it?
Yep, that's the plan.
And has this something that's been designated for a while? And what do we have for a balance in that park fund right now?
I'd have to look to see exactly where we're at. I think we're at about 170,000. I think the last time I looked, is that? I don't remember if that was, was that on the balance sheet? Okay. So I think it's right around 175,000, I believe it's the last time we looked. We have some things that have been dedicated out of that. We've already kind of earmarked if and when the Milltown Trail gets extended and the bridge finally gets done at Billsby and they extend the trail to the edge of Cannon Falls. We do have some of that money that we've kind of tentatively designated to put towards that connection, to get it connected up with Lower Hannan's Bend Park and that trail. But for the most part, we haven't really designated a whole lot of money out of that. We've kind of just left it as things come up. We've looked at, you know, possibly if there's, well, usually it has been new playground equipment. Every once in a while, if it's, we've talked about, do we want to use it for new bathrooms at one of the parks, things like that. But what we've come to find out is really we're better off using portable bathrooms instead of permanent ones, just for damage issues. So really, for the most part, we haven't set any of that money strictly aside for a lot of projects. We've left it fairly flexible to use it for things like this as they come up. So the money's there. It wouldn't use all of it up at all. But, you know, really, for the most part, it's just been, we haven't really planned a lot with it. We've known a few projects that we want to earmark money for, but other than that, we haven't really set aside anything specific.
Has the Park Commission gone over all this and what's going in there and what it's going to be and all this?
Nope, we haven't, they haven't gotten to that point yet. Basically, it's just, here's the estimated cost. I think Public Works did review maybe some initial plans of what it would look like and things like that. But, you know, nothing's really been finalized yet. And it also could change a little bit, you know, if we determine there's maybe a better location for some of the equipment. It could be split into maybe two different park structures and used at one park and another park. And we've talked about some of those options maybe coming up. So we don't want, you know, we're not saying for sure that it's all going to go in there. But I think for the most part, that we've got a general idea of what it's going to look like and what it's going to be used for. And none of this is going to happen until next year. So, you know, if something changes over the winter, we identify another location that might be better. We can always split the equipment around a little bit and move it.
So we're generally going to put about 45,000 in each park, or the total package? Is that what it comes out to be?
Well, some of it Leroy has a grant. Our cost is 51.
I'm talking about the total. We're doing about 50, and then there was, what, 45?
About 40, something like that, yeah.
So we're probably talking about 40, 45,000 for each park?
I'm not sure if it's going to be exactly an even split between the two. I think we'll take a look at what, maybe which park gets most used and maybe put a little bit more at that part, a little less at the other. But I think that was the general conversation of Public Works.
Mm-hmm.
It seems like a lot, the one thing I will say is that I got a little bit concerned because one of our city employees last summer was over in Trollhaven Park, and they were going to do some stuff with that park. And I didn't get a chance to drive over there and look at it today. But at that time, he said, when they got over there, they canceled what they were going to do because the kids had a ballgame going, and there was about a dozen kids participating in it. So I guess one of my first thoughts was, you know, how big is this? How much does it take? Do we take out of the park so the ballgames don't work out anymore? That's why I was concerned about that the Park Commission has studied this and evaluated it and decided where it should be located and what's the best for all this. Because I do think it's quite an investment. Not that it isn't good, but 50,000, I think is a lot of money. But, so that was my concern.
Any other discussion? Anything from, anybody from Public Works Committee?
We have to invest in our youth.
Yeah.
And this is one way we can invest in them.
And that's what park dedication funds are for, is to help enhance our parks.
This is the only thing that we can use this time.
If there's no other discussion, the Chair will take a motion to approve the purchase of the playground structures from Minnesota-Wisconsin Playground.
Some move.
And I will second that.
A motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. And that'll move us on to... If we can get this thing back up to date. That's why you had to back up. Item 8C, which is going to be the application for payment number five, the East Side Improvement Project.
Okay, Aaron. In this, we're going to pay this up to 15%. Does this include the south side of Highway 19 too, or just the north side of Highway 19?
We haven't gotten...
Oops. We haven't gotten those properties across from the school yet. We haven't, that doesn't include this.
But it does include the south side of 19, not the new 11?
Yep.
That we added on?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
Yep. And as the update, Greg was here today and met with him, and they, depending on weather, they should have the sod hopefully out tomorrow if it's not raining. And then they'll have that final lift done by Friday on all the roads. So they should be pretty wrapped up. Then they're going to start putting, reposting mailboxes, things like that, too. So soon, they should be done. Once they're done, we'll calculate the number of days they're over, and then we'll have to discuss some sort of compromise as far as penalties and what we want to do.
Well, I drove around the area and just looked at everything. And I did ask Tom to take a ride with me for 15 minutes today so we could look at all this and talk about it. And some of the issues that I pointed out to Tom, I can maybe bring up tonight, is that the one thing along the cemetery, along there, that they didn't put a cell fence in, it's, we're really lucky we didn't have a heck of a hard rain, or we'd have had quite a mess over there. There's some other things that Tom and I discussed with the piping being, the potable water piping being stored on the ground and not on pallets and stuff. And some issues up by Trampsky's property up there with the drainage tile they put in kind of under his sidewalk and stuff. So we talked about that things, and then there's no second layer on any of this. There's still a lot of stuff around. Tom did fill me in that Friday, the black topping is supposed to be done, the second layer. There's some issues being held up because of gas mains that got to be done. There also was some issues there that we did have four or five hits on gas mains over there. So I guess when I talked to Tom and I looked this whole thing over, I don't feel comfortable paying this up to 15%. There's a lot to be done there, depending on the weather. We also, I understand, they ended up with some scheduling issues, and I certainly understand that, being in the construction business. You can have things planned out for a week, and all of a sudden, by noon on Monday, your whole week is screwed up. So they did pull off this job for a while. So I don't know, I just don't, I'm not comfortable that it's at 15%. And maybe after Friday, I would be willing to vote for that. But right now, I don't feel comfortable with that.
And I think the issue would be is that, what the city engineer is saying is that this is where they're completed to to date. So the money that we have left, I mean, we're paying them up to what the work they've done. So the, the, basically, they're done with 84% of the projects. We're paying them for 84% of the work, of the contract work. So it may seem like you want to hold more and wait till it's done, but we're actually, you know, paying them based on what they've completed. So if, technically speaking, if they walked away now, we would have the money left to pay someone else to complete the work, you know, based on those prices, which is, which is how it goes with these sort of things. So, you know, as far as, you know, being concerned with not having things done and things like that, that's where we address the penalty phase for them being over, over the project deadlines. But as far as the work being done, SEH is saying they've done this amount of work. This is what we should pay them for. So it's really hard to say that we're not going to pay them for the work to date because technically, they've done it. SEH has signed off on it. So really, it's, you know, if there's issues, it's, you know, we'll address any sort of delays, you know, as part of our penalties. But for the most part, if the work's done and the engineer certifies that it's completed, we are obligated under our contract to pay them for it.
Yeah, I don't know what the 15% would be, how many thousand that would be. But I know a complete coating of all that, a blacktop, is a lot of money. And so I'm not arguing that. But I, I just don't quite know. Somebody signed off on it, I understand. But I don't quite feel it's there. The other thing I wanted to point out to you, to the council and to Aaron, is that I talked to Tom today, too. We got one alley up there that seems to be an issue. We deal with the streets, but we don't always deal with the alleys. And what I mean by that is sometimes we put these new streets in, and the alleys end up low or high, and most of the time, they end up low. We have a tendency to just leave them as gravel. And there's, we got two alleys on that end of the town that have got low garages in them. So technically, you can say it's a people's fault. They should have built the garage higher or something. But no, they built it, and with no curbs and stuff, it did work before. So my concern is, is that Greg and Tom look at alleys more serious on these next projects because it's, it's a thing where one alley, we had to go back in there and back drag it at an angle to try to get the water to stay back along the edge to get it back out to the street. We also, when we get into some of these hills we got, the alleys will have quite a slope to them. So we're getting gravel out in the street afterwards. So I think we got to take maybe a storm sewer in some of these alleys or stuff a little bit more serious. I do know when we get to the west side, that I had several people call, that we do have one alley down there that just ponds up every time it rains hard. And I mean ponds up enough you can't go through. And that was brought up to Greg a year ago to make sure to consider that when we end up over there. So I just wanted to bring up that I, we got to think more about these alleys and not just the streets, the total package. Thank you.
Yeah, and actually, as far as the alleys go, Mayor Robinson did bring that up, that he's had some complaints and concerns about some of those, too. So Greg and Tom are taking a look at some of the east side alleys, but also, I think, just more in general, all the alleys. And we're going to try to figure out some way to address that. It's like you said, it's, it's easy to say, well, it shouldn't have been built if, you know, one side's so much lower than the other, but they already were. So now it's just, what can we do to help minimize all this water that's, you know, pooling up at garage entrances and things like that? So we're going to try to figure something out. And I think some of it's going to have to be putting some catch basins in alleys and running some storm back there. But they are looking at it, and we're going to try to get it figured out one way or the other. And then as far as the project itself, we have roughly about $250,000 left to pay on it after this is, after this pay app. So we'd still have 250,000 left. And that, that's basically about the full 15% or, you know, whatever it is. That would remain on the project.
Okay.
Any further discussion? I know it'd be nice when it's finally done. I mean, they've been dragging their feet, you know, over there. So with that, the Chair will take a motion to approve the payment for the East Side project.
Some move.
I'll second.
Motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
No.
Ayes have it. Okay. That will bring us to... Reports. Mr. Maroney. Chief?
Well, believe it or not, we made it through homecoming weekend, or week, without a seizure of large quantities of toilet paper. Food shelf will be mildly disappointed. Should anybody watching wish to donate some to the food shelf, I'm sure they would take it. Having completed that, we're now turning our attention to Halloween. There will be a trick or trot event downtown with the businesses on the 31st from 4:00 PM to 5:00 PM, I believe. I don't have my notes in front of me, but I think that's the times. And then, of course, we'll have trick or treating throughout the rest of the community. Residents will probably notice by just looking outside, it's getting dark. Just remind them that especially as we get into trick or treating time, that there will be lots of little kids running around. Most of them will have on some sort of reflective item, but some of them won't. And just drive safely and watch out for them that evening. That's all I have.
Merle?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nope.
Leroy?
No.
Leroy?
Sorry, sorry, you guys.
Jay?
No.
I got a question about the ball field that, you know, you replied in that.
Yep.
One question, I've gotten a lot of calls, you know, on it. And like, one of the big questions is, okay, if the football team would have had a playoff here, that according to the rule there, that they couldn't play there.
Well, and again, it's...
That would happen.
Right. I mean, obviously, they would play their game there. It's...
Yeah.
I mean, what was done was, unfortunately, we had just kind of a bad series of events. I mean, we had a, you know, a heavy winter of snow. It lasted a long time, a lot of freeze, a lot of thaw, a lot of water. We had a lot of use of that field late last year, so it kind of went into the winter, chewed up. It, the, you know, winter didn't give it, it didn't help in any. Then the spring, we had, you know, a long time of drying out. So we had some, you know, major issues with it. We brought in some turf specialists from University of Minnesota, and they gave us their guidelines. They said, you know, to get this thing back where it needs to be, here's what you need to do now, and here's what your best bet's going to be for the rest of this year. And so, you know, we obviously want to do our best to keep within those limits. I mean, clearly, if the high school football team has a home playoff game, we're going to let it go. But, you know, then at the same time, we're balancing against, that's a big difference than, you know, other events that aren't high school playoff games. So we had to weigh it, you know, versus the importance of the event and what the field conditions are like and things like that. So...
I mean, the field itself is in good condition right now, right?
It's, it's much better.
Yeah.
It's much better.
Yeah, it is.
But it's still, it's still a little bit of a work in progress.
Well, yeah, they're going to end up seeding and all that.
Yeah, it's going to, it's going to be a couple of years to get it back to where we used to have it. So basically, what, the short answer is going to be is that we're going to get everybody together again, like we did at the beginning of this year. We laid out the plan. And we're going to try to just get a better plan for next year so we don't have some of these questions that pop up late in the year where somebody's, we have late requests, and then we're trying to do the best we can with the information we have. And, you know, the hard part is, is that, you know, obviously, our intention's never to, you know, upset any of the groups that want to use it. It's really just trying to balance out all the groups that want to use it versus the health of the field and what we're going to have then for next year. And I think part of the process when we get everybody together, too, is just to prioritize, just so everybody realizes that clearly, our priority is going to be the varsity football games. It's going to be the baseball games, high school, you know, amateur, those sort of things. And then after that, we'll have to kind of have a sliding scale of who can use it and how, and that sort of thing.
Seventh and Eighth Creed, they didn't play there this year, did they?
No, they played behind the elementary and the high school this year.
I think Seventh, Eighth, and Ninth all play at the high school.
I think there were some JV games down there, because I...
Yeah, JV was...
But that's still...
JV and varsity was into the number, right?
Yep, and that still factors in the number. But that was part of the agreement, too. At the beginning of the year was that Seventh, Eighth, Ninth would not use the field.
Right.
To help with that number. So it's kind of a work in progress. And like I said, we, we make a decision based on what we have. And, you know, unfortunately, sometimes, obviously, when you say no, it can cause problems. And again, it's, our intention is never to, you know, purposely exclude a group for whatever reason. It's just, we were trying to do the best we can with, you know, with what we have. And we wanted to try to get that field nice going into the winter this year, instead of having it in such poor condition going into the winter. So we'll have a much better plan next year. We're going to get everybody together again. We had a good plan this year. I think we're just going to, you know, every, you know, it's the first time we've ever really done that, where we've set that number and had everybody kind of sign off on it. So I think we're, the plan's evolving. So we had a good first step this year. Now for next year, I think it's going to be better because we're going to clearly lay out that we're going to either allow these uses or we're not going to allow them. And here's the situations where they can't happen or can't. And so we'll have that worked out.
Get them involved a little more.
Yeah, well, and see, what happened was is they were invited.
Yeah, they were there.
But then they didn't always, they didn't come really to the meetings when we talked about some of this stuff.
Right.
And I think there was just some assumptions that, well, we've used it before, we'll use it again. And I think then, when they weren't involved, I think they were surprised.
And then there was another thing at the softball fields down there. Not the concession that's by the road, but the one that's in a little bit.
Okay.
It's also a storage area that they've been told to get their stuff out of there, that the city wants to use it for Christmas decorations to put store.
Oh, I haven't heard that one. I can check on it.
But the building has a plaque on the outside that says, "Built for the youth of Cannon Falls." So I think...
This one at the softball fields?
Yeah, so I think you will have a lot of problems if you try that.
Well, it's the first one I've heard of it, so I'll check and find out what's going on with it.
There's a plaque on there, so...
Okay. Well, I'll check and see. We'll figure it out.
Yeah, thanks.
Hey, you know, Aaron, what Morris brings up, I think is really good. And I'd like to highlight that a little bit. We were on vacation a year ago, traveling out of state. And we met some people and asked where we're from. We said Cannon Falls. And they said, ain't that that little town on the south of Minne... in south Minneapolis, got that beautiful ball field? And last spring, we were over at River Falls, the graduation over there, I got the same kind of comment from somebody over there, the kid had come over here and played. So, I do know from my past experience with farming, there is years you're gonna go through winter kill, there ain't nothing you can do about it. And we had so much of that this year with farming, the alfalfa fields and stuff. So, my theory is, yeah, I want you to do a good job, manage or whatever, but the more we get on there and the more they play on it, have at it, if we gotta take a little money away from these parks over here to put more money down there, we can do that, too. So, the more it's being used, and the more we gotta take care of it, to me, is a better thing, because it is a big asset to our community. Thanks, Morris.
I also think that the girls' powder puff game should be allowed down there.
It was.
And it will be in the future, too, right?
That has been a tradition for years.
That's part of the conversation that we'll have to have with that.
Yes. Because if they want to allow it, I will reserve it for the home.
Well, I think the issue we came up with that one was, is that generally speaking, it doesn't last that long, and most of them are wearing tennis shoes anyways, it doesn't have much impact on the field.
Yeah, it's tradition, you know?
We weren't too worried about that one, they don't cause much damage, they're good, they're good about cleaning up after themselves, and like I said, it's not, it's not 40, it's not 40 pairs of cleats running around a whole bunch, so, yeah, we haven't had an issue with that at all, which is why it was, we said that was fine, no issues. I don't see it changing in the future.
Okay.
You keep an eye on them, Merle's.
Okay, anything else from anybody? I'd just like to say, yesterday I went and visited with one of the third grade classes over at the elementary school, one of the student teachers over there, Margaret Hoffman, invited me in to go talk to her third grade class, and it was a lot of fun talking to the youth about city government and being good citizens, and I want to say thank you to them for being good students and listening and asking lots of questions, and I'll be glad to go back again.
I got one thing, too. I forgot. Media com, next Tuesday, here, 7 o'clock.
There you go.
Anybody got complaints, which, or good, but more complaints than any? I don't know, but please come, or get an email, or drop something off here if you can't come, and we want to make sure that they're gonna solve a lot of problems, hopefully.
Thanks. If there's nothing else, the chair will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.